Resolution that the board's going to vote on today, and then everybody will have a chance to talk, and then we'll vote it after. Resolution of the Northwood School Board. The school board of the Northwood School District pursuant to Chapter 20 HB 329 of the 2017 legislative session hereby legalizes, ratifies, and confirms all actions, votes, and proceedings held at the 2017 Annual School District Meeting, which was postponed due to a weather emergency. This action is taken after a properly known public hearing. Said notice having been published in the Fosters and having been posted on the school district's website 72 hours prior to this action. A true attested copy of the resolution will be posted at the place of the Annual School District Meeting with like copies to be posted at Northwood Elementary School, the SAU's 44 office, and on the school district's website, with the original to be delivered to the school district clerk, given under our hands on May 4th, 2017. So we're gonna open this up for any public commentary pursuant to this. Is there anyone who'd like to speak?
I'm Ms. Mary Viella, and I've handed out to you a copy of House Bill 329, which is now Chapter 20 of the laws enacted during the 2017 session of the New Hampshire Legislature just a couple of weeks ago, was passed by both houses and signed by the governor. And I've also included the text of several relevant laws on the books in March when our town election was postponed. So I can understand that this board does want to take the opportunity that's been provided by the legislature to try to ensure that the results of our election will be considered legal, but that's unnecessary in my view. The moderator was authorized to postpone, he did so properly, and there was nothing illegal about scheduling the March 21st voting. I believe that our town should stand up for the election laws that are on the books and affirm that the moderator acted properly. It's true, there's a lot of controversy about this whole matter, of course, as everyone knows, in the press during the days around the original scheduled date and the postponed dates. And the Secretary of State had a lot to say, and other political figures did as well. And it's true, as the Secretary of State pointed out, that RSA 652, and you have some of the text of, I think you have 652 there, calls for the Secretary of State to prepare a calendar setting forth the dates when action required under the election laws must be taken. But many of those dates, in fact, I would say most of them, are determined by the election laws themselves. For example, RSA 669 sets the date for the election of town officers as the second Tuesday in March, and RSA 391 calls for town meeting to be held on that same Tuesday, or quotes in accordance with RSA 4013 in SB 2 towns like ours. Now, you know, that sort of verbiage starts people falling asleep, so... But the wording of all of those RSAs is very clear, and really, it's just, I think, all the letters and numbers that make it impossible for people to think about these things. RSA 4013, our SB 2 RSA, lays out timetables for budget submissions, hearings, and town meeting sessions. And so, really, the authority of the Secretary of State is limited under RSA 652 to determining the actual dates of all the second Tuesdays and last Thursdays before first Mondays that are referenced in 39:1 and 669:1, and so forth and so on. But meanwhile, RSA 40:4, and I don't know whether people have actually read this, because I have all along felt this, though, if anybody, well, many people did actually read it. When you actually read it, you see that it says, "In the event a weather emergency occurs on or before the date of a deliberative session or voting day of a meeting in a town." Now, voting day is election day, there's no distinction made between voting day and election day in our laws. "Which the moderator reasonably believes may cause the roads to be hazardous or unsafe, the moderator may, up to two hours prior to the scheduled session, postpone and reschedule the deliberative session or voting day of the meeting to another reasonable date, place, and time certain. And the date originally scheduled shall continue to be deemed the deliberative session or voting day of the meeting for purposes of satisfying statutory meeting date requirements." So I just feel as though when we have laws that are on the books that are clear and that they do give our local officials a certain sort of authority, that it's a good idea to know that. And I hope that if you believe as I do that Northwoods moderator did act properly, the election was scheduled and then rescheduled in compliance with the laws on the books, I hope that you'll make that clear tonight. Thank you very much.
Anyone else talk this? Okay. We will close the public hearing part? We'll open the regular school board meeting. The first thing on our agenda is actually to vote on this resolution. Should I just read it again? For Mr. Wells' comments?
Yes.
So, Mr. Wells, I'm gonna have to read this back out again. We're gonna have a, we had a public hearing, and now we're going to vote on this resolution as a board. So, resolution of the Northwood School Board. The school board of the Northwood School District pursuant to Chapter 20 HB 329 of this 2017 legislative session hereby legalizes, ratifies, and confirms all actions, votes, and proceedings held at the 2017 Annual School District Meeting, which was postponed due to a weather emergency. This action is taken after a properly known public hearing. Said notice having been published in the Fosters and having been posted on the school district's website 72 hours prior to this action. A true attested copy of this resolution will be posted at the place of the Annual School District Meeting with like copies to be posted at the Northwood Elementary School, the SAU 44 office, and on the school district's website, with the original to be delivered on the school district, to be delivered to the school district clerk, given under our hands on May 4th, 2017. Someone like to make a motion to approve this resolution?
Some.
Any discussion on this?
I would just like to agree that I think Hal made, the moderator made, the right decision in doing what he did. He needed it.
Yeah. I totally agree with that, too. I think voting on this is not gonna hurt anything else.
No.
I'm all for that. All right. Any other discussion on this? Very good? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No? If those who pass, we're gonna hand this around, since we have to sign it. Do you have a copy?
Let's get the voting results in the back.
Okay. Bills and manifests. They're going around. Mr. Janabert, do you have those? Do we have any for non-public session? Can we wait? Okay, go wait. So, we do have a presentation by some, by the kids. They wanted to, as part of the principal's report, they wanted to come and show us what they were doing with the robotics club. So if there's no objection from the board, I'd like to give them the opportunity to do that now, so they can go home and do the homework later, prior to opening public comment, or if the board prefers we can do it after open public comment.
No, I think that's great legitimacy here.
Yeah. You're good?
Let's start the meeting off with a smile.
All right.
Set the tone.
That was when I walked in.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
That was eclectic. Good, how are you?
Well.
Thank you. No, thank you. Anything else?
All right, you're on.
Good evening, everybody. So, as you can see, we have some eager, eager students.
The mic, sorry.
Which mic?
Whichever you want.
Okay, good. All right. Thank you. So, we have some eager students, as you can see, for ready to participate and show you what they've been working on in our STEM Robotics Club, which meets once a week for two hours. And I'll just name off some of the students that we have part of it. They also named themselves the S3 Humans, which I believe correlates with the machine, correct, Breger? I can see you nodding, so that's affirmative on that. All right, so speaking of which, Megan Breger, 7th grade, Skyloto, also 7th grade, Eva Roy, 7th grade, Annie Toms, 7th grade, Seth Quinney, 7th grade, Alex Qualia, 7th grade, Gabe Collins, 6th grade, and Lily Wolf, 5th grade. So the reason why we brought them here is to show the awesome and fantastic work they've been doing in their group, in their, in their club after school. So I'll leave it to Mr. Levergood and Mr. Roberts to kinda take it from here.
Thank you. Well, thank you for having this visit tonight. Should I speak into this mic, or can you hear me okay? Mike, be good. Okay. So thanks for the invitation, we're really happy to be here. I've been in town, lived in town for about 25 years now. Both my sons went to school here, and this was always a home for us when my sons were at school. And we, we made our own friends here, our sons made friends here, and over the years I've missed it. We're empty nesters now, and my sons have moved out, and I wanted to reconnect with the school, and I'm very passionate about electronics and robotics. So I sent an email to Mrs. Young, and opposed to doing a robotics program, and so they invited me in, and I met Mr. Alfred, and Mr. Robert, and they made everything happen, and they facilitated the purchase of our robotics kits. And this is the S3 robotics kit, and which is programmable.
Don't break a shoe.
It's programmable, and it's provided by a company called Parallax, Allen, California.
It's very cool, because it frees the students of the burden of having to learn all the detailed syntax that's involved with writing code. And it provides a layer of abstraction, it's called, what are called blocks. And it was a program that was developed by MIT, where they take big chunks of computer code and condense it into a colorful block, so the kids can arrange these blocks to create programs, much like people would get Legos or something. It allows them to focus on the algorithm development of the problem-solving procedure, rather than focusing on the details of coding that can be kind of boring. So they're having a great time doing it, and it's going really well, and we're very, very proud of them, they've come so far. And today, we started working on controlling the motion of the robot, which involves controlling speed, time, and thereby controlling distance. So it involves a little bit of math, I've just been very, very impressed with their math abilities. Couple examples, I just wrote s equals d divided by t up on the whiteboard, and asked if anybody knew what it meant, and boom, they all knew what the variables meant, they all knew the meaning of it. And then we talked about 100% speed is .18 meters per second at 100% speed. And asked, how fast would be going at 50% speed? And they first thought, oh, .9 meters per second, no, .09 meters per second, and they just came up with it. I didn't even know anything about decimals or mathematics in physics, I'm great. So I was really impressed. And their logic skills are great, they're figuring out angles, they're making the robots on the floor, figuring out angles to make them turn, and as you'll see, they've figured out how to use the robots to draw letters, which requires very detailed control of the motion of the robot. So, I'll, Mr. Robert, do you have any questions? Oh, one last thing. We also have servo motors, so the robots can lift their pens up and down, and we have infrared controllers that can use on a TV set, so they'll learn how to drive the robots around by remote control.
Mr. Robert?
Jane. What I'm gonna do right now, except for talking, which you don't wanna hear that anyway, I'm gonna let our students come up and show you a couple things, real quick, for a minute or two, so you kinda see what's going on. So we have eight students in our team, and so we divided them up, you know, pairs of two, to kinda show you a couple little quick things. So I'll bring the first two up for you. The first two are actually gonna kinda show you how the program works with the robot. So they actually do really well with it, and they tend to be able to demonstrate it pretty well, so I'm gonna have them come up and show that to you real quick. And that'll be, I'll be making it a lily. And they're gonna, I'll try to, I'll hold the mic for you. You guys will come around here, I'll hold it for you, and they can kinda show you what's going on. I'll do my best on this. Forgot about the mic issue.
Okay, so this is the charge sound that this is the program for. This is what the, like, it will look like when you first start, it'll be like, and then over on the, on the side is where you can pick stuff and put them onto here. And so what you would take to make the charge sound, or like noise, is this box right here, and then you fill in the numbers right here. So the first one would be the tone, this would be like the pitch. And the second one is the same, so you can have two pitches at a time, but in this case we only have one. And then the next one would be the duration in milliseconds, so it'd be how long the noise plays for. And then the next one is the volume, 1%, and we just have 100. And then down here is, there's a weight, so between all these and all of the ones down there, there is a weight, and it's just so little, but it's there, and it makes a difference. And so up here is where you put it to make it go to that, so.
Yeah, basically what she says, the program actually talks to the robot and sends, through this wire, it sends the program that she just did.
And so if you press it, so now this, this button is yellow, so it means that it's sending it to the robot, and now that it's blinking, it means that it's almost done, and when it goes gray, it'll make the noise.
Cool. Good job. Okay. Yeah, so what we're hoping to do with that is, this is what they do, any new program they're doing, any new task that we give them to do, they go through these procedures with the computer, talking to the robot. I call it zapping, but it's programming the robot, they go off and they do this, and they come back and forth really quickly. They can do that task that they just showed you now within a few seconds. In fact, one of the groups that comes up, I'm gonna show you, actually did this five times in the last six or seven minutes before they came into this room, just to get a program to do a certain thing. So it goes pretty quick. So the next two we got coming up is Eva and Skye, and they're gonna kinda show you what they can do with a robot and a piece of paper. So why don't you girls come on up, you can show it to them?
Hello. So today we have been working...
You can actually hold up your name.
Today we have been working on making the letters of our names, so making the robot draw our names. And here is Eva's, and hers will draw an E and a V. And before she starts, she does have to pick up the pen in the middle, 'cause otherwise it won't switch letters, and that would actually not look like an EV. There you go.
Okay, good job, girls. Excellent. All right, next two boys we got coming up, these are the ones I just mentioned that were trying to tweak a program right at the very end, and all of our members can actually do this. They'll go on the floor, they'll run their program, they'll find a problem with the program, they'll come up, they'll go on their computer, move the code around, hit it, go back, they're back in three or four minutes at the most. So they're gonna show you what happens when you start really messing around with a program a lot, which is actually good, 'cause I want you to see, they want you to see this. This'll be Seth and Alex are gonna come up and show you this. Go ahead, guys, I'll let you hold them up.
So what we're gonna show you is what we like to call the dancing robot, because it turns so much. It just turns back and forth, and what we were trying to do is make it, whenever something steps in front of it, like this, it would maybe turn a certain direction or stop. So he mostly made this.
Like the honesty?
So he set it to loop over and over again, so this will just keep going forever until the computer stops it, or the power turns off.
That's better dance moves than I do.
You taking no change? They were really, really trying to have it do a couple things, and they were really building this big, long program, and we're trying to tell them, "Look, guys, you know, we're gonna show this, but they need to understand that this is how it works. You modify your program, and you, you change things, and you change something else, and it's, it's part of the process." And they learn a lot by doing that. You actually learn more by doing that than just telling them to go to a straight line, "Hey, it works," and walk away. They do learn a lot with that. So the last group, two we have coming up, kinda orchestrated something with two robots that they're gonna show you, and little movement stuff with two robots, it's gonna be Annie and Gabe. Come on up. Okay? And this'll be, this'll be pretty cool. All right, you gotta tell them what you're doing, okay? Which one? Okay.
So we programmed these robots to do this kind of unique comparison together. So they go different directions, but they make the same shape and same movements. They just go different directions.
Want me to hold for you? I'm gonna hold for you. Even drew a square in it, too, that's pretty good. Okay, that's our team right now. It, really, you need to understand with this whole thing, we've been meeting, this is our, today was actually our fourth, fourth meeting, right? Yeah. This was our fourth meeting. All, everything they've done, and I've only shown you a little piece of it here, it's been eight hours. If you come, if you ever come down to the, to the computer lab, when we're actually doing our meetings, you'll see a lot of stuff happening all at the same time, all over the room, and it's really, and they're just on their own, they're just flying. In fact, this group, they've actually exceeded, that's good to say, right? Definitely exceeded our expectations, and they just kinda just move forward. And I think a lot of that just comes from, I think, younger people just grab onto this better. Almost like language, when you learn a language, you know, youngest people just seem to be more open to it, and they do so much better. I'm really proud of them, they do a really good job, and I have an ulterior motive, obviously, this kind of program coming in, and for Rich Come and Die and doing this with us. This is the kind of stuff I'd like to see come more into classroom level stuff, STEM programs or STEAM programs, into the curriculum in general, so we're kinda hoping that all of them will help spearhead this movement into more education opportunities for us in the future here in the school. So I'm definitely very excited for it, and they're really, they're blazing a trail for us, and I do appreciate y'all's help with that. Good job. Thanks for your time, we definitely do appreciate it.
Thank you for coming, everyone.
Thanks a lot. That's great. All right, moving back to our regular school board business, we're up to, we're gonna open it up for opening public comment.
This one.
Hi, I'm Karen Breger. I just wanted to thank the board for having the kids come in tonight. I'm the proud parent of one of the kids who demonstrated their robot, so I wanna thank you both for giving them this opportunity to present, because I think beyond the skills that they learn with programming the robots, to have that ability to come in front of a group of adults, be on camera, which they may not have known, but it's a great experience for them. I also wanna thank, you know, Jocelyn, for having this opportunity. I know the community member approached the school, but to be open to that and have it as a pilot to hopefully expand for the future. I know this is one of the things, there are tons of fantastic resources right here in our own community, and the more that we, as a school community, can connect beyond the walls here and bring those resources into the school, really fantastic things can happen, and I think this is a great example. And I would also just like to reiterate what Mr. Roberts said about hoping to see this type of work, this type of opportunity become more of a regular part of what goes on in the classrooms. When kids have the opportunity, this kind of hands-on stuff, they can see the results, they can see the real-life application of coding and programming. I'm in human resources for a software technology company, this is where it starts, right here. If you can't, if you lose the children in these elementary, middle school ages, if they think science is too hard, or they don't understand the real-life applications and how they could actually be fun, and where that can go, it's really, it's, they're gone, right? You can't get that back in high school. So this is a fantastic foundational opportunity for them, and I'm just really grateful and glad to see that it happened, and I just wanna thank everybody for that.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hi, Sharon Plord, and I wanted to thank the board for allowing us to do the fundraising we did, and just wanted to give you an update on Drama Club and what we've been able to do with the money we've raised. We were able to buy eight programmable LED lights, so we have our own lights, and we just got a board and headset mics, eight more, so now we can have 17 kids mic'd instead of eight. So it's very exciting, so thank you all. I hope next week is our final performance for the year, Willy Wonka Jr. These kids have worked so hard, so I hope you all get a chance to come see it. And one other quick thing, we have a piano that is on the stage. It was purchased long before I got here. Becky had said she had tried to donate it, do things, it's still there, I would love it off the stage. Not sure how, I don't know if we can raffle it and stuff, or my other option is where it was purchased with town money, school money. I'd also, if, I don't, Tim, I don't know if it's anything, you could auction at the Beanhole bash, but if I, I would like to offer it if that's an option. I don't know, you guys can talk about it, I'm not sure what we do about it, but someone should get some music. It's a beautiful piano, obviously needs to be tuned, but, but thank you all for everything.
Thanks. Any other member of the public, take this opportunity, any board member, like, take this opportunity to address the board? No? No? I'll just take a minute, I just wanted to point out that today there was a vote in the State House for Bill SB 191, it's called. This came from the Senate, and what this bill does, it's not, by the way, it was a vote taken by the House, it passed the House, it still needs to go to committee, and the Finance Committee, and then come back to the House, and it needs to be signed by the governor. So it's not, it's not there yet, but the vote today was encouraging, that it passed. But SB 191 provides funding through the adequacy grant for kindergartners in a full-day kindergarten for the full amount of a student, whereas previously we only got half the amount for kindergartners. So if this vote goes through and the governor signs it, we may be looking at getting back at the envelope pump calculations of approximately $60,000 towards, that we can use for kindergarten, which in addition to the $40,000, $43,000 we're getting for the lack of midday bus, will pay for a great big chunk of what it costs for kindergarten, if not almost the whole thing. So we're not gonna be asking the Northwood taxpayers, at least for, for that much money, maybe, maybe not, I don't know, depending on how the exact numbers work out, so, I would ask Marjorie, but she's not here. So I just wanted to make that announcement, that's good news for us, and hopefully that'll continue to make its way through the state. Awesome. So you have no other public comment, we'll close the public comment session. And move on to approval of the board minutes.
Motion to approve the school board minutes from April 20th.
Discussion on these?
My doctor.
It seems happy. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Repose? No? Carrie's unanimously. I believe we also have non-public minutes. No, maybe not?
Yes, you do.
We do. Yes, starting on page...
I just saw it. But it was probably clear down.
They're sealed, so probably don't need to...
She talked.
They are sealed.
We review them and...
She was here, but it's...
Okay. Maybe we'll wait on these, then, for non-publics, and say, the minutes have been sealed. Yes. The minutes, we did vote to seal... The minutes, we did vote to seal these minutes, so if we're gonna review them, we should review them in non-public. I think that's what we're gonna do, so. That's probably the way that should be done. Thank you.
Don't seal that one all the time.
We'll move on, then, to the principals' report. Ms. Young?
Good evening. My report begins on, I'm sorry, our report begins on page 24. Mr. Tom provided a facilities update. He and his crew, as usual, used vacation to spruce things up and get some things repaired. So, we appreciate that, and the building looks great. You saw our fantastic representation from the STEM Robotics Club, we're really excited about that, and hoping to expand that both into the summer program and also continue the program next year. Just wanted to alert the board that Adrian will be in Boston with eighth grade on June 1st, and I have a commitment in my regular life that I need to attend to, so neither one of us will be here that night, but we'll make sure that we have everything in place before then for Mr. Ruding and Dr. Godomsky. Also, I wasn't sure if we, I needed board approval for this, so the center school, the preschool in town, has closed, and Amy Hannavan reached out to us and offered some materials, knowing that we were moving into full-day kindergarten, and so we went over and took a look at some stuff, and took a bunch of things, and, you know, are very appreciative, 'cause that will help to offset some of our budget needs, and also just give some stuff that we probably wouldn't have thought of on our own until we had kids in the room.
Was there a whiteboard there?
There were some whiteboards, yes. Some bookshelves, lots of books, lots of manipulative-type things. So, I wasn't sure if the board wanted to make a motion to approve that, or...
We usually do.
In the past, we've, yeah, we've made motions to accept donations from the school for various purposes, and usually it's some money, but I think donations of equipment would probably fit under that as well, so I will go ahead and move that way, accept these donations from the center school.
Second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
And then, I just provided some highlights of, again, great things that are happening in this building every day. It is May of a long year, what it feels like, and great things are still happening in this building every day. I mean, we walk into classrooms and are so impressed on a regular basis. You know, we're seeing teachers and paraprofessionals eating lunch in the cafeteria, at the tables with kids. We're seeing teachers leading elementary students through Socratic circles that are completely independent of teacher input, you know, the teachers are really training the kids to be able to engage in thoughtful and deliberate conversation and dialogue around literature in fourth grade. Students are creating models, they're doing hands-on activities, teachers are continuing to identify and post depth of knowledge to our higher learning objectives. So, just really proud of what our students and teachers are doing this year. And, you know, it's Teacher Appreciation Week, so we've been celebrating our teachers, too. The tomorrow in the Laker, you'll see a, you know, kind of testament to the dedication of our teachers from me. So, just really wanna promote, you know, the kids are doing great stuff, and our teachers are doing great stuff, too. Also, an update, we had kindergarten screening this week. We screened 37 students, they were all adorable. There were a ton of staff members that helped out, and some people who weren't staff members, who were sort of, you know, preschool folks, for example, came up and helped out from occupational therapy. So, thank you to everyone who helped out with that. I also wanna thank Northwood Transportation, Deb brought a bus over and gave the kids an opportunity to get on the bus and learn about what bus safety looks like, and they thought that that was super cool. So, that was very successful. And, I have two other things for you. Student Council is proposing a fundraiser for some activities of the fun variety, to be determined. So, I'll pass that out. They asked for a Dress Up As A Favorite Movie Or Book Character Day for a dollar. They originally wanted to do that on a teacher workshop day, and I told them they probably wouldn't make much money, so we moved that to the day before.
Comes up on special occasions. Special occasions.
So, I would like the board's determination of whether or not that is approved.
So moved.
Any discussion on that? All in favor?
Thank you. And then, one last thing, Mrs. Alberg's class is studying government and Senate and the House of Representatives, and as part of their learning, they wrote letters to each school board member, and they have some questions for you, and you will see that the theme in them is that they are really interested in hearing back from you. So, I will pass those out for you, and they came up with great questions, so you're gonna have to put on your thinking caps a little bit.
We can type these, right? We don't have to write them?
You have to write them now.
I won't be able to read them.
Everyone's question is different?
Yes.
Oh, interesting.
Thousand words?
A million words or less, please. All right, and that is really all I have for you, so, questions, comments?
Any questions for our principals? Thank you very much. All right, we are going to move on to the superintendent's report. Dr. Godomsky is disposed of tonight, so we have Mr. Ruding to cover for him.
You have two personnel reports, one in your packet, and one that I just passed out. If you wanted to process the one I just passed out first, the resignation of Patrick Salvatore, custodian effective on May 12th, and he's got his letter on the back.
That's good. Second, any discussion on that? All in favor of accepting the resignation of Patrick Salvatore?
Aye.
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 Return to page 25 to 34 in your packet.
Oh, page?
25. So, on page 25 are nominations for summer positions. We can do them all together, or take them one by one?
I do have one slight correction.
Okay.
The next tutors, their start date is actually June 26th, not July 10th.
Anyone like to make a motion to accept these?
Should we, do we have to read them, or do we just accept them?
Except the mess written.
That's great. I second that.
Any discussion on that? It'll be in the minutes, right? The names?
That's in the packet.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's for the nominations, right?
On the next are your Merivista stipends and your Title I Coordinator's stipend.
Those are just information, correct?
Yep. Thank you for the information.
And as soon as I get through all these pages, on page 35 are your paraprofessional nominations. I don't know how you'd like to do these, it's up to the board.
You're just gonna abstain from all of them, Tim, or do you want us to take them all individually?
We usually do them all together.
That's what I thought, okay. So moved, as written?
Second.
Right, any discussion on these? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining?
On page 36 are your non-collective bargaining unit staff renewals.
So moved, as written?
So, should we discuss? Second, on that first? Second. You're moving all of them at once?
Unless, do you wanna do them individually?
I'm okay with all of them at once, I'm just curious.
Tim? Do you wanna do them all at once?
Well, these are with raises?
Those are with 3% raises, yes.
Do you wanna do them individually, or all at once?
No, I don't care.
Okay. Are you okay doing them all at once?
Yes. All right, so all at once?
So moved, all at once.
All right, I'll second. Discussion, Mr. Wells? So, page 38, I know we're gonna get to, but is that gonna be a, so should we talk about that first?
I would do your renewals first, based on what we anticipated and budgeted for, and then consider that request separately.
So, this is with 3% raise for all of these positions? Which is what we budgeted for? That's what we validate?
What you budgeted for?
Okay. And this is what the superintendent recommends as well?
Correct.
Any other discussion or questions on these? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstain?
What was the vote on that?
Five zero.
On page 37?
Do you wanna do them all at once, or individual, all at once? Minus Patrick Salvatore.
Correct. Sorry about that.
So moved, minus Patrick Salvatore.
Any discussion on these? I mean, we don't have the, why do we have the budget numbers on there? Not the budget numbers, I mean like...
You know, what their rates of pay would be?
Right. Usually, that's what we do. I mean, I suppose it doesn't matter, this is gonna be at their rate of pay as appropriate by their contract.
Yeah, they're gonna get a step in whatever was negotiated.
Right.
Except for...
Right, so it'll be this...
The crossing guard, the lunch clerk, and the truant officer, are the same rates.
Same rates, okay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstain?
Page 38.
Yeah. So, page 38, we do have a request from Mr. Sayers. I would recommend that we talk about that in non-public, if that's okay with you guys, we'll have a non-public session at the end, and make a decision there. Let's move on, and remember to come back.
Anybody talk about number five? Right, okay, I'm supposed to. So, number five is food service prices, and we're going to hold that for a little bit, because we got the food service contract today, and I need to wait for Marjorie to get back to have discussions about the school lunch increase calculator and where we're going to go with that. So, I'm happy to report to you that today we received the contract, so we'll put that in your next packet, and then you'll have a price recommendation in your next packet.
Anything else? We do have, no, it's a good sport.
I'm done with the superintendent's report.
I don't have any questions for Mr. Ruding. Commissioner Ruding? Commissioner.
I don't have a question, just on the invoices, we have a Stanley, this is normal for Stanley. I thought we had corrected it, but we're not. We're paying $188, I guess because he needed it, I'm not sure.
Can I come over and look?
Doesn't specify on the invoice what the invoice is for.
Hate paying anybody anything when they won't tell us what they did. So, I left it out so you could see. I mean, there's, I have no clue what he did.
Yeah, they were getting better at that for a little while.
Who's Stanley?
Elevator. So, $188, but we don't know what Mr. Stanley got, what he did.
What like that? Ms. Young, do you know?
My guess is the inspection, but I...
No. But that's not the point. The invoice should say what he did.
Yeah.
It really should, it just, you know, I can't imagine why Tom okayed that when we don't know what it's for.
Got into the elevator, rode the elevator.
Look how long it took us to figure out where the third elevator was in here.
Isn't that a lot?
See? I didn't know that for the longest time, I knew where the two were, but I didn't know where the third one was. Oh, it's actually on the stage.
Oh, that's...
I don't remember who told us that, but, thank you. It was, what's his name, he told us. Gary, yeah, he's one of the first.
Any other questions for Mr. Ray? Okay. Seeing none, we'll move on to our new business. We have a request from Northwood Transportation. My understanding, Mr. Ruding has some information he wants to give us on that, but that might be more appropriate for a non-public discussion as well.
Correct.
So, if you don't mind, we can wait on that and do that in non-public. This is something in public that's more to say. Any other new business committee reports? But shouldn't we stay in public work? She's recommended?
Unless it's gonna change, I was gonna say.
Let's just wait, we can, we just wanna come out in non-public, and we can do anything.
Committees Monday morning, I am meeting with the Clubs Committee, the Teachers Clubs Committee, or the two of them to go over clubs for next year, so that we can, two weeks when we meet, I should hopefully have the list for next year's clubs. So that I can reach out to, and find out, which would be nice, too, so we have those all set to begin the year.
Any other meetings since our last meeting? I know strategic planning, we didn't meet, the deadline for strategic planning for people to get to...
It's Monday, isn't it?
Yeah, it's coming up. It's three, I think it's Monday or Friday or something like that, it might be...
I think it was the eighth.
Yeah, 7th through 8th. So, anyone who's in earshot, who is still, might be interested in the Strategic Planning Committee, please get in touch with Dr. Godomsky. I haven't, I haven't talked to him, so I don't know.
I have one update for you when we get down to it in the agenda.
On strategic planning?
Yeah.
You can give it to us now?
Oh, are you in there? So, I did...
Oh, we have an update, I didn't see that. Go forth, what are we talking about?
Tim, I did get in touch with Breonna Jackson, and she is interested. I just need to get the dates, or what committee she'll be on, and then send her that information so she has it, so whenever...
Dr. Godomsky should have that.
Right, I can touch base with her Monday, and let her know. She was very interested and gracious, and is excited and looking forward to it.
Ms. Young, do we have anyone in the 7th, 8th grade? Or is this the 7th, 8th grade you're talking?
No, this is high school.
This is a high school.
Right, so I'm, I have put it out, I will have Mrs. Kelly, the social studies teacher, put out another promo as part of a civics lesson in the next couple of days.
Sounds good, thank you.
And can we, if it is an 8th grader going into 9th grade, is there a way that we can work with Cobran and maybe get this as part of their volunteer hours?
Sure.
Because they're volunteering for this.
Yeah, it's community service.
It should, it should count.
I know that they have to approve it, so if there's, you know, we find out what we need to do, so if there is an 8th grader, maybe that could be...
I'm sure, Cobran needs the 39 options that they have for our community service. I mean, that'd be, that'd be, that'd come be up to them to deal with their, I'm sorry, Cobran and figure that out, though, you know? We can't do that for them.
I don't know how it goes.
They are responsible for submitting the activities and the forms and getting them approved.
Right.
Okay.
Try to keep them a little independent with that.
Great.
We'll learn.
Meet your deadlines.
Any other committees meet? So, these committees, you guys have a, do you have a planned meeting? I think we have a lot of stuff that's on your plate, it'd be nice to put one together, perhaps. Is there, is there a time you guys can get together?
Tim's always available, it's my availability that's the issue, so...
All right, we just gotta work on that, I guess.
Do you wanna do the...
Friday?
How's your Friday look, thanks? No, do you follow on Friday?
I can do it anytime.
I'll get with you a little time on Friday.
Okay.
All right, great, it'll be good. Just, we got a lot of stuff on your plate, so getting that rolling would be a good idea.
And I'm hungry.
Good.
Try the kale salad, it's really good. I have two more kids, don't worry.
Any other committees, I'm not remembering. Any other committees, I'm not remembering right now.
Honestly, committee met before vacation, but we need to-
Yeah, we're waiting for the nurse.
We've got to get ready for the nurse, and get her to chime in.
We'll have that scheduled for next week.
Okay, good.
Thank you.
Okay. Old business, we do have strategic planning updates, I believe you just gave it to us? Or is there more to it?
That's what I have right now.
That's what you have, okay. The last thing, the last official thing, or open thing, I guess, on our agenda, is board goals. I was hoping everybody would be able to come with a few goals, that we could throw around, and maybe make a list of goals that we want to accomplish for this year, this session of the, of the board. It'd be nice to winnow them down to a few, you know, three, four, or five ones that are smart goals, so we can measure them, and then make sure they get done. So, you look ready?
Yeah, my first one is to complete the strategic plan on the date that it's supposed to be completed. I know it's kind of vague, but it's to have the strategic plan, the finished product. That is my number one goal.
So, I'm glad you said that, because that was my goal as well, so.
I went first.
So, we'll put down, complete strategic planning, planning process? I mean, do you care that it's completed on the day we say we're going to complete it? Or does it say it's completed on this year?
By the time we reevaluate our goals.
Next year?
Yeah.
That's well within, which should be done this fall, or November, or something?
The finished product?
Yeah, yeah.
February, I think.
Okay, so, that should be-
And then evaluation of our goals is in March, it's supposed to be in March, right?
Yeah. Yeah, so, everybody on board with that one? Make sense? Alright, anyone else, anything? Nope, no, you're in, alright. Give everybody else a turn.
I'm not exactly sure what's the best way to do this, and I don't know if March would be the date for it, when we're, you know, evaluating our goals, but something to do with like curriculum, and we are getting, you know, hopefully having the full-time curriculum director up and running, and, and not something like, I want curriculum set by the end of, you know, the year, because that's not going to happen, but Jocelyn, I don't know if you can help me with this, like, what would be a goal that we could look at for curriculum, to say by the, by, you know, June 30th of next year, this will be done, as far as curriculum? Do you know what I mean? It's, and I'm not expecting that we'll have curriculum K through eight, or pre-K, or K through eight, or anything, but-
The other thing to think about here is, these are, these are board goals, right?
But we also direct, sorry.
What would the content area be, that you would choose first?
Probably ELA.
So, you would want to have vertically and horizontally articulated curriculum by?
Is that a doable goal? Because to me, you know, what we keep hearing from the community is that we need to give more direction, and to me, by setting this goal, we are saying to the administration, this is our board goal, which is, to me, their goal. Am I wrong? Is that, like, that's-
There's nothing wrong with that.
Okay, that's, because to me, that, I mean, I have said from the beginning that I want a full-time curriculum director, so let's get this moving.
I think it might be good, if you want a curriculum goal, is to let Jocelyn have a little time to come up with one to recommend to you, rather than, we do it right here.
But we could, right, we're obviously going to say no, but we could say that. We could say that we want to give direction to curriculum, but what's the endpoint, you know, that's the hard part.
Well, that's what I'm saying is-
If it's complete, if you've got an end product, then there's your measurement.
I'll put oversee curriculum development, right now, does that make sense?
As a placeholder, yeah, because I was going to say, that's awful vague.
Right, because that's not-
It's not smart.
No, it's not smart. No, right, it's not, it's not. So, make up different letters.
It'd be not smart.
So, I'll put to be refined. Ms. Hunter?
I don't know if I want to make it a goal, but I have a question. A year ago, we had an AmeriCorps grant, that we threw out the window, and I just wondered if we were going to reinvestigate that ever, or are we not putting that back on the table? We were going to rewrite it, we talked about refocusing in a different area, and then we never heard another word about it, so I don't know where the administration lies on that. So, I don't know, like I said, is it a goal to restart that process, to rework that, or did we decide against it?
Or maybe something to put on an agenda?
Yeah.
For next meeting, or two meetings.
Yeah, I'd like to have the discussion, at least, to hear what everyone is thinking about that, because we kind of left it hanging.
Yeah, and I think-
It's disappointing.
The broad goal was more volunteers, I mean, because like, I was thinking about the after-school program, having, that was part of the whole discussion, and then-
We got that grant to have more tutors, and we didn't, we didn't use it, so. Like I said, I don't know if it's, it's not exactly an articulated goal, but it's-
But it could well turn into one.
It could be one, if the administration is still interested in pursuing this, and I'm not sure if they are, so I think we should have the discussion again.
Well, and on top of that, one of the things that I had, I'd been thinking about is, it would be nice when we post the job, and I don't know if it's posted already, for the curriculum director, if they had grant writing experience, if we could put in there some way, it's not required, but somebody that has the experience already to go out-
I mean, they have a written grant, it just needs to be revised.
Right, but there are so many more grants out there, that we don't have a grant writer, or, you know, that type of thing, to, it would be nice to be able to have-
Isn't it, the SAU has a grants person.
No, you have a, no, you don't have a grant writer. You have a grant manager.
That writes grants.
Who manages the grants.
Who, no, who does, no, actually. He does write the Title I grant with Jocelyn, I write the IDA grant, he does all the reporting and monetary stuff.
But he knows about grants.
We all do.
Alright. Any other goals? Tim, do you have anything you want to, to add to our goal? One of the ones I wanted to throw out there was this, this talk of having a, some sort of regular newsletter, that the school board communicates to the community somehow, which we have talked about before, but not done.
I thought that was the way- We could have a school board column in the Laker.
Yep, that's, that's kind of the kind of thing I was thinking.
Not like a separate, yeah, not a separate publication, but just maybe, like, a monthly column.
Calling the Laker, a, maybe posting on Facebook, and like, a letter to the sun, or something like that, into the, in the forum, you know, just saying what we've been doing, basically, right?
Would we need, like, we would have complete board approval on that?
Yep, we could, yep.
It wouldn't just be like, one of us saying, here's my-
We could, we could do it either way, we could have the whole board do it, or we could have the Communication Committee do it, or whatever. I mean, it depends on how, you know, it should be pretty darn objective, right, it's just going to be a listing of what we've been up to, but yeah, we can bring it to the board and do it that way, too. That'd be fine. But, as a goal, I mean, it was one of our goals last year, we never really followed through on that, and I'd like to do it this year, I think it would help the community to see what we work on, and what we're doing, so. And is that smart enough for you?
Absolutely.
Cool. So, like, regularly publish a newsletter, and we can figure out the details of that. I mean, that's, it's a goal, right, and we'll figure out the details of how to do it as we, as we go along.
It should be bi-monthly, every time we have a meeting.
Well, the Laker only comes out monthly.
Yeah, but if we want, the Laker comes out monthly, and if we want to approve it, that means we're going to be behind by two weeks every time, too. We can figure that out, I mean, we should, if we don't have anything on our-
Is there room in the Laker for something like that?
Yep, and we are planning next year to send out, not quite such a lengthy version, but more of a weekly newsletter than a monthly, so.
We could do whatever. It's still smart.
I'm going to put it out, is regularly, regularly publish a school board newsletter. So, Mr. Wells, you were, I'll come back to you then.
So, I, before, I think it should be a goal, because we got it approved, is the accreditation process. So. How do we make it smart?
You want to engage, and then you ask accreditation?
Before we go into a goal, I like to have someone talk about the accreditation process, what it entails, so can we get that on the-
I think it's at least beginning the process, because that sounded like it was a multi-year process, correct?
It's probably going to be.
I think that's what Mom has said.
Oh, really?
It's not like a one-year.
Follow through on the accreditation, or get accredited?
I think that's, yeah, that's the end state, but I mean, that's a, that's a, that's a broad goal, you know, because we, a lot of us don't know exactly what it entails, because there is a lot of moving pieces.
So, I put on for the next agenda, explanation of the process, we'll let Dr. Gudowski figure out if he wants to explain that, or have Niasse come in, if we do have Niasse come in, it'll probably won't be in the next meeting, it'll be a meeting after.
Alright.
Depending.
Does that work as a goal? Like, whether we'll work to rework some of these things, but-
Yeah, like, the outcomes, I mean, objectives and stuff like that, we can work out later, but I think overall, beginning of the accreditation process.
Any other goals that people had in mind? We have five-ish right now, which is four or five.
Tim, do you have anything?
I don't.
Sorry?
No, I said I have five.
You have five, okay, yeah.
Five's a good number.
Yep, I think five, I think five's decent, and one of them may go away, right? So, what I have, just for completeness, one, complete strategic planning process by March. Two, oversee curriculum development, and this is to be refined after we talk about it next meeting, so put goals on our agenda for next meeting as well, because we do need to finalize these goals, with good wording. Three, as a potential goal, pursuing a grant, whatever that turns out to be. Four, regularly publish a school board newsletter. Five, support the accreditation process, and this is again, to be refined, based on the information we have at the next meeting, so. So, if we get this information about these ones that we don't have, what's planned on in our next meeting, finalizing these goals, and getting them in form we want to see them in, so. Anything else, any other goal-related stuff people want to talk about at the moment? Seeing none, we can move on to our parking lot items and school board timeline. Yep.
No, he's doing now.
Don't forget that.
Sorry, I lost the page.
Page forty-nine is our parking lot items. And on page fifty-one is our May calendar. Parking items, we have cafeteria ceiling, the CIP plan, those will be going to the Facilities Committee, think about those. We will be meeting with the Selectmen, hopefully sometime in the summer, so we'll give a little break for now. Magels, anybody see anything in here that we should start planning for? Volunteer Appreciation Day, do you know, Ms. Young, if there's anything going on for that, or when that is, I don't even know when that is.
That was last week.
Okay, we missed that.
Well, it shouldn't be in May, then.
Yeah. Unless they do it different in the school-
Skinny garden registration is-
It was last week, they said.
Started, it was yesterday.
It's already started, right?
It's a schedule.
Yesterday.
We did have a-
That's right.
We did have a request for what to do with surplus funds, from Ms. Young, our last meeting, but we didn't, did we approve some of those? I don't think so.
No.
No, we didn't.
They were, they were-
I think we need to wait on those, I think we're still-
I think on your next agenda, you need to have a year-end fund balance projection.
Yep. So, let's put that on our next agenda, is the surplus, surplus funds.
The beginning discussion of graduation awards nomination, Jocelyn, were you able to talk to any of the teachers, or the eighth grade teachers about the, what we said the last time with the school board nomination?
I've reached out to them, I'm really actually interested in the criteria for all of the graduation awards, so that's in process, I have not heard back yet, I heard, heard that there is a document, I just haven't gotten my hands on it yet, so, but I will work on that for the next.
The school board award that's given out, I believe, is for community service, basically, right? Is, is the guiding force behind that one, I don't, there probably is some somewhere that is more clear, but-
I think you also, on your next agenda, need to- Who has your after-school program?
I do not.
So, you need to talk about your lease renewal?
Okay.
I'll cheer you.
Renew a lease for the after-school program?
Yes, I put that on the next agenda.
Yes, please.
Summer school appointment posted, actually, Jocelyn's almost done with summer school.
The only one that we're waiting on is for the regular education middle schoolers who haven't passed all year, so we're waiting another week or two to run reports in MMS, before we decide if we're going to need somebody for that or not.
And Transportation is all taken care of for that?
We're waiting, so we have a verbal agreement with Dale, we don't have anything written down or formalized yet, because we need to know who the kids are and where they live first, and the RSVPs are not coming in at quite the rate that I was hoping, so we have sent out second notices, and Ms. McDonald, the elementary school counselor, has offered to start making some phone calls to encourage people to return their forms, so we will be getting on that pretty quickly.
There's two things on this May one that are the same.
Total?
The update in summer maintenance facility renovations, maybe that should be a topic for the Facilities Committee next week.
Okay, did you hear that?
Yes, I did. So, I'll let Tim read it, though.
Okay, so, on our main thing is update on the summer maintenance facility renovations, so, that's something the Facility Committee should probably look into as well, and then report back on, that'd be great.
I was just saying, the plans for anticipated surplus and discussion expenditure of surplus funds, those can probably be combined into one?
Yeah, I got it right here.
Oh, okay.
We'll give it to Marjorie.
Yeah, we'll have the final number, more, more final numbers.
No, no, there's, that's, they're two separate ones on our list, so they can be combined into one.
Gotcha.
You've already sent your graduation date, correct?
June sixteenth. Better not change, it's going to be snow. Let's hope that doesn't happen. Any discussion on any of these? Anything else we want to add to the parking lot, or anything we should add to May, that we maybe didn't think of? Going, going, gone. Alright, so, our future agenda, right now, we have, for our next meeting, we're going to talk about school lunch price and the food contract, discussion about the grants, hopefully maybe some accreditation discussion, depending on scheduling. We'd like to finalize our goals, and discuss what we're going to do with the surplus funds. Any other agenda items, any board members would like to add to that agenda at this time? Explanation of what?
Niasse accreditation process?
Yes.
You got that?
Yes, and there's a possibility.
AmeriCorps, year-end fund balance, all that stuff.
Yep.
Renew a lease for the after-school program.
That's right. Thank you.
School lunch prices?
Yep.
Cafe services contract.
Yeah, let's add those together, but maybe-
Just checking.
Yep. Anyone? No? For agenda items, if you want to add to the agenda, please contact me seven days before, before, seven days before the meeting. Upcoming meetings, on May seventeenth, we have our semi, semi-annual meeting, joint meeting with Cobrown, at Cobrown Library, that's at six o'clock. That's at six o'clock. Our next regular board meeting is May eighteenth, at six-thirty. Joint board meeting, May twenty-second, at the SAU building, at six-fifteen. And then on June first and fifteenth, we have more regular board meetings here. Is there any closing public comment?
I'd just like to congratulate you on remembering about the newsletter for the public. For those of us who choose not to use social media, I won't tell you what I refer to it as, but suffice it to say, it's not used in my house. Or if we don't have kids who are either bringing home, I don't know, does the Laker come home in written form with each student?
It's mailed, and it's on our website.
Okay, and so it's mailed, so it's mailed to households with students. So if you don't have a student, you're not getting that, you're certainly not even getting a reminder that, hey, as of this date, you can go online and take a look at it. And I think as far as public relations are concerned with the town, things like tonight, seeing the robotics demonstration and whatever. If I hadn't been here tonight, I wouldn't have known a thing about it. And I think that's the kind of news that people in town want to hear about. What innovative things are we teaching the kids and how are we utilizing the time and the instructors that we have? I think it's vital that it goes into the sun. However frequently you choose to do it, whether it's bi-weekly or monthly or what have you, I think it should be done.
Any else? Ms. Korea?
I'm going, Ms. Maria, I'm gonna agree with Ginger.
Oh, my word, I'm gonna get my calendar right.
Because I'm with, I'm in the same boat as you, and I'm also wanting to grant for you to close caption the television because I couldn't hear most of what you said tonight, and when I watch it on TV, I know I'm gonna have the volume way up. Thank you.
I'm not so sure how to do that, but...
Talk to Gary.
We can ask. Yes, I will, I will, I will certainly attempt to speak more loudly as well. I know it's a problem for me sometimes. Any other public comment? Any board members like to take this opportunity to comment? Seeing none, we'll close the public comment session. We do have to go into non-public session under RSA ninety-one dash three, part two, sections A, C, and E. They're motion to do so.
It's all moved. Second.
We have to have a roll call vote for this, Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Ms. Harvard?
Yes.
Ms. Williams, yes? Ms. Hunter? Mr. Janterberg?
Yes.
All right, we're in a non-public session. Thank you guys.